All right, everybody. Thank you, everybody. I just want to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County Cochise, State of Arizona. This is being held on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, at 7:02 PM in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
Right.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sued.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Stephen Pocken, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Matthew Gurney, Public Works Director, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
So for tonight, for a moment's silence, I would like, after we stand, everybody to take a moment. I've been affected, of course, by what has happened in Nashville, Tennessee, and I'd like to give my condolences to all the, everyone that's been affected by that. And then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. So, everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes of personal preference and just think back. And actually, two years from next Friday, which is the 14th, we have our City Manager Stephen Pocken as our second year here with us. So, I don't know. It seems like yesterday to me, but probably seems like 10 years to him. But outside, outside of that, I just wanted to recognize that we have been going forward for those two years. Also, following a lot of stuff that's happening up at the legislature. We thought we were out of the woods in a lot of ways. They do these things called Strike-Everything Amendments, where they just, even though the bill is passed, they just strike everything out of a bill that was put in for, you know, how cats are sold, and they turn it into whatever they want to. So guess what? So there's hearings coming back on the rental tax, SB 1131, it's back. Also, believe it or not, there's still a new one that's coming back on the food tax. It's SB 1030, 1063, which replaced the HB 2061 that was actually done away with by our governor. So that's sitting in the wings. And then there's still the wonderful charter review. So they may try to get away of us, which is a charter city, and take away our rights that we have as a charter city. So that one's also sitting. All these are in the wings, just waiting to see. They're all negotiable. They use those to negotiate with the governor on bills and budgets. So blessed hearings are ongoing now. So again, we are hopeful that we will sit on pins and needles until they finally adjourn. So just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. So with that, we'll move on to general business. The first item on the general business is accounts payable. I will accept a motion.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $629,223.42.
I have a motion, a second, to approve accounts payable. Do we have questions? All right. I had a couple, but I had an answer today, and it was very satisfactory, announced reasoning behind it. So we have a motion, a second, to approve accounts payable in the amount of $629,223.42. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, so move accounts payable. Is done. Moving on, this will be approval of the consent agenda. Tonight, we have one approval of some minutes from our council meetings on March 1st. We have five appointments to our Committee on Disability. And there's also several more that have applied. So I think our Committee on Disability will be back in service very shortly. So we have five of those approvals. And then we have a special event liquor license for the Copper Queen Hospital. And we also have a parking facility ride and use permit for a street party on Subway Street. Do we have anything that anybody would like to discuss? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed items A through H. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda through items A through H. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Chair determines the ayes have it. That was easy. And thank you all for showing up and being here if you need to answer any of these questions.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Let's move on to old business. This is item three. This is the discussion on the possible approval of ordinance O-2306. This is amending the City of Bisbee Code, Chapter 6, Animals. This is adopting a new subsection, which I ask to be put into our ordinances outlining the public sale of animals on city streets or in other areas dealing with it. They really weren't being necessarily treated or ready for sale. This is our second reading. I will open this for discussion. Anybody have anything to discuss? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for item three.
I move to approve ordinance O-2306, amending the City of Bisbee City Code, Chapter 6, Animals, Article 6.1, Animals in General, adopting a new subsection 6.1.18, unlawful public sale of animals. Second?
I have a motion, a second, for item three, which is approval of ordinance O-2306. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So move. Moving on to new business. This is a, something that's been in the works for quite some time for this gentleman. This is a discussion of possible approval to establish $2.52.1 cents as the price per square foot for the sale and transfer of certain surplus property, being a portion of the city-owned property located on Queen Street. And discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-2307, authorizing the sale and transfer of surplus city property, being a portion of the city-owned property located on Queen Street. This City Manager pocket.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. As the mayor alluded to, this particular property was requested by Mr. Benosch back in the pandemic era. And it was one of the properties that we all placed on hold pending some changes in the co-ordinances, which have now gone into effect. And if you recall, this property is located off of, excuse me, Spring Canyon Road. And in fact, the property that they are requesting is what commonly referred to as a paper street. It actually has a name. It's Queen Street. And the applicant's residence actually sits in the right-of-way of Queen Street. And there's also a utility pole that interferes with the safe passage of that paper street. So it took a little bit of time. And, you know, the amount that it's appraised at determines whether or not it can be sold administratively or whether it needs council approval. In this particular case, since we didn't know that it was such a small piece of property, it was determined, in the case where they went out looking for appraisal, that none of the appraisers would do a full appraisal of the property. So one of, a firm offered to do something called, they land, excuse me. I know I work down here somewhere.
Landowner value.
Thank you. Thank you. An opinion of value, which, for something like this, is probably entirely appropriate. And as you can see, the established value was, you know, $2.52.1 cent per square foot. So it's, in our opinion, and the opinion of counsel, legal counsel, that this is more than adequate method to determine the value of the property. And so we're recommending that you approve establishing the price per square foot in ordinance 2307, and then further to authorize the sale and transfer of this property to the Benosch family. And there's lots of documentation in the back.
Correct. Questions?
And if Mr. Benosch would care to answer any questions for you. He's here.
Right. I look at it in more ways than one. And there's property that the city owns that really isn't very usable behind it, but it still doesn't put us into a...
Yeah, I was gonna save this for later because it's really a little bit off the subject. But the city owns a little piece of property that will become landlocked by the sale. It is absolutely no value to the city for municipal purpose of any kind. And unless anybody objects, we're gonna put it out to the adjacent property owners to see if any of them wish to purchase it. And hopefully, we can also use this opinion of value for the price of property as well.
Yeah. Not really one that's highly, unless you have a mule. Questions? I will entertain a motion. I have a little problem. My computer doesn't want to bring up something named... Go ahead.
I move that we approve, that we establish $2.52.521 cents as the price per square foot for the sale and transfer of certain surplus city property, being a portion of the city-owned property located on Queen Street. I, should I go on to the next?
No. Two, one, and time.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to establish a price of $2.21, $2.21 for the price per square foot for the sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, so move.
I move that we approve the ordinance 0-23-07, authorizing the sale of said property of surplus city property, being a portion of city-owned property located on Queen Street that has been unestablished, A, P, N.
I'll second that. So we have a motion, a second. Do we have any, anybody with any questions or comments? Without seeing any, I'll ask for a vote to approve ordinance O-2307. Do we have a motion, a second? All those, sorry, we'll leave a roll call.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Ayes have it, seven zero. So move. Mr. Mayor.
I just, I just want to thank the applicants because they have been incredibly patient.
I know.
For a very long period of time. And we're glad we were able to resolve the issues and get this taken care of. Just sorry it took so long.
Well, you got caught up in a lot of stuff, including the pandemic, and then other things came before us. So keep the faith. That's what I tell everybody. The city will work with you. Give us enough time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty, moving on. This is a discussion of possible approval of updates to the supervisory job descriptions for the Public Works Department. Go ahead, Ms. Landers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am bringing you for you updates to job descriptions within the Public Works Department. We are updating these supervisory positions, which are going to increase effectiveness and productivity for Public Works Department as a whole. The supervisory roles will also be an opportunity to increase responsibility, improve morale, and also opportunities for advancement, which aids in retention. So the additional duties covered by these supervisory roles will also take some off of the Public Works Director and the Operations Manager, which will just allow everyone to work as efficiently and effectively as possible.
All right, we have questions.
Yeah.
No, I have that. No?
So this is an update of the job duties and responsibilities. Just, these people exist now. We have them in the job. We're just updating it. What is the purpose of this? Can you explain?
Yes. This evening, I am just bringing the updates to the job descriptions for your approval. The decisions based upon opening these decisions, budgeting, et cetera, would be upon the decision of the Public Works Director and City Manager, and then obviously, you know, approval of budget and whatnot. So right now, these are not budgeting positions. We don't have anyone in these positions, but we're getting it prepared if that is a decision.
So for future, future...
Yeah, future planning.
Okay.
I do have one quick question. One of them is the wastewater collections. The one you showed me was actually from when we ran the wastewater. Is that one being done away with or is that still in place if we decide to take the wastewater back?
There is, there is a separate wastewater superintendent. Thank you, which is the facility position.
Right.
And so that is not being...
Done away with.
No.
And that was the one that was on this.
Did it?
I think so.
I may have used it for, if I did, I mean...
Senior supervisor wastewater treatment.
Senior supervisor?
Wastewater.
Of waste.
The wastewater.
Which includes the plant.
Wastewater treatment.
Yes. And I don't want to be way of that one.
No, no.
Okay. That's, no, clarify this. It was on here, and I thought, oh, hey, man, we're not, we're not changing one into another. Okay. That's all. That's just one we got in place if we needed. Any other questions?
Just one more, just so I probably clarify this. So right now, none of these personnel exist working. We just, this is just a future reference.
This is for future opportunities.
All of these positions that were listed here.
All of these positions are just...
Okay, so just to clarify this. Okay, thank you.
I didn't mention that these job descriptions were taken and approved by the Civil Service Commission on March 27th. So that was also taken care of.
Why do we need these positions in the wings? I guess proper better.
It was, you know, it's an opportunity, whether management decides to move forward with it, it at least is there and ready to go. There is, there are many benefits to having mid-level management positions. Again, you give opportunities to your current employees, and also securing those tendered employees who have that institutional knowledge. It gives them opportunity, which helps morale, longevity, things of that nature. And it is, I believe, very important, especially with Bisbee, to keep those positions or the people that have that institutional knowledge of the Bisbee functions and systems when we're talking about wastewater and things like that. To me, anything that would give them growth opportunity is something to be looked at and considered.
Bless you.
So, any else?
One more.
Okay.
That's a third.
I just, so I think from what I'm hearing, this is an opening so to promote some people that exist. I just want to clarify this. I think that's, that's part of the idea.
The intention is for promotion, but like with any position, we would have to follow the personnel rules and regulations for recruiting, which is posting it publicly, et cetera. So it's not that these are pegged for certain employees. It will be open for those employees to apply and follow the recruitment process if they so choose.
If I might say, what I perceive this as is most supervisory positions always have X number of people underneath them. And usually, any more than about six, it starts to become a little overwhelming, where our Public Works Director and our Operations Director now has all these people underneath them instead of being able to do a chain of command to go into a supervisor, who then has three or four or five underneath them. Every one of these job descriptions has at least two or three people that would answer to them.
Correct.
So that's the way I perceive it, as a way to, to move the chain of command up and down. Of course, I came from a more military background, but, but I think it works for, that's my idea. Any other questions? Not seeing any. I'll ask for a motion for item five.
Next time. I just can't.
Oh, what's that? Oh, you had another one?
No, no.
I just, a statement, but we can forego this for now.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
I'm moving on.
It's with Steve. He was just...
I was, I was just... Oh, okay. I love our council. All right. So who's gonna make me the motion? Do I have to?
I move to approve the updates to supervisor job descriptions for the Public Works Department. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve these updates to supervisory job descriptions for our Public Works Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Hearing none, obviously, the ayes have it, and we are so approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Moving on to item six. This is discussion of possible approval to enter into a contract with Mark the Costa Design for Marketing, Branding, and Website Services for Camp Nakco Project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Again.
The City of Bisbee went out to bid for the marketing branded website services for Camp Nakco and Nakco Heritage Alliance. We received four sealed bids on March 22nd, 2023, from the following companies, listed Creative Science, Boardly Group, Mark Costa Design, and Meridian Group. So the funds for this were allocated in the Mellon Foundation grant and in order to establish and translate the vision for Camp Nakco into a graphic identity. The review team unanimously suggests, selected and recommended the contract be awarded to Mark Costa Design. He had the lowest stated price and is technically acceptable. And aside from, I mean, he has good experience. I mean, I know it's all included in there, but definitely has worked with nonprofits before. And that, that was the decision of the committee.
And he's local.
And yes. Why are we all jumped on here? Yeah. No, it's, it's great. Questions? Recommendations, everybody?
I met him at Camp Nakco and really was impressed.
Good.
Really, really impressed.
I haven't, I haven't met him, so...
We discussed some of his, his background in marketing, his passion and understanding what we were trying to accomplish with Camp Nakco. And so I felt that there was not that learning curve of understanding the objective of what we wanted to accomplish would not be a great... I have no background with any of the other bidders, but he is local, and I think that that would be very impressive relationship.
Great. I'll let you make the motion then.
Oh.
See, see, that's what you get. That's what the mayor does.
I move to approve, to award the contract with Mark Costa Design for Marketing, Brand, and Website Services for the Camp Nakco project.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Mark Costa Designs for Marketing and Branding of the Camp Nakco Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none. The ayes have it, and so move.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. And number seven. This will be for our Public Works Director. This is discussion of possible approval to renew our service agreement for generator maintenance with Gentec Power Generation Specialists. Go ahead, Mr. Gurney.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So it is, we went to council, I believe, back in 2021 for a first initial contract with them. And since then, they have, they have brought all of our generators up to good working condition. Previous before this, the generators hadn't been serviced since 2017. So it required a good amount of work, in which they have done and done well. So these are all vital backup generators for our wastewater services, our, the pump house in Old Bisbee, and for the police station. So they're very vital needs for, also, the Mule Gulch, police station, and Tintown as well. So they're all vital, and so we need to continue to maintain these. So I'm asking that we renew the service agreement with Gentec. And then you can see the different price breakouts under physical impact.
Each location.
Yep. So water systems is the pump house, and the wastewater is the two lift stations. And then you have the police station as well.
And the generator down at the wastewater line.
Yeah. It's not on this. They, they maintain their own. But yes, we do have that.
You're missing a 72 kilowatt generator on this list.
Oh, we forgot about that one.
I seen the cable. Okay.
He's joking.
All right. Discussion about keeping our auxiliary systems up and running.[1665.06]
Yeah, I have a question. Matt, do you have this in the budget? Why are you showing it in the negative and line being affected all? Is this because we're going above budget? Can you explain that to us?
Yeah, no, this is...
Are those, Matt, are those negatives or are those dash marks?
The only one is a negative is it shows as wastewater because previously, how this was budgeted was in building maintenance. So we're moving these into the appropriate line items, and this is not going to be coming all at once. This is not something that's... We're going to be going and we're going to be getting an invoice, you know, next week. This is semi-annually. So we'll have one, you know, in six months from now, and then again in six months from now.
No, but the question is, are these the fiscal impact? Are these... Why are you showing a negative? I think Steve was trying to help you with this. Why is it a negative? Can you explain it to me?
That's because it wasn't budgeted in that line.
Wasn't budgeted?
Before, yes.
So I just wondered, so it wasn't budgeted, then you have to go back and...
Yeah, so when we're doing, in the budget that we, you guys will be approving in the next...
So you're going into next year's budget? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Because we didn't budget for that?
Correct. Because it was put in a different line item before. So this is the correct one where it should be coming out of.
I'm going to take a little bit of responsibility for that. We should have worked a little closer with Pat to get these correct, so there goes no...
Okay, that is all, just some clarification. When this shows up, you just...
If something's negative, we use brackets, we use a negative.
Yeah, okay.
It's not like they don't have money in the wastewater system to pay for this.
Correct.
It's just it wasn't there.
So you're transferring it to the correct...
It will when we end up at the budget. That's how we make any corrections out of one versus another. But mainly, it's showing up as a negative. This is that it wasn't budgeted for as well. It is one, but in reality, there's plenty of money in there right now to cover these. And most of these will all be coming in next year's budget and this is going to be coming this year.
So hopefully, you'll be aware.
These are all allocated in this line item.
Right, so six months from now, we'll get a bill on. Alright, any other discussion? Comments? Without... I'll propose that we move to renew our service agreement with GenTech Power Generation Specialists.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the contract with GenTech Power Generations Specialists. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our last, which is a city manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items real quickly here. Last Monday, when we got our strategy meeting, we had talked about paying off the balance of the unfunded liability in PSBRS that was left behind when we sold bond issue. And at the time, I told you we had the cash in the general fund to dispense with the rest of that debt now. Well, we did it, okay?
Wow.
So I can't remember the exact amount, it was five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So you will probably notice in a couple of months that what we pay in PSBRS for police and fire will drop a little bit because we will no longer be making those monthly payments and of course, the interest payments that go with it. So I feel really good about that because this is kind of the end of the process. And when we sold the bond issue, we made a pledge. In addition to pledging for the bond issue, we made a pledge to PSBRS and to our bondholders that we would dispense with the rest of that debt within two years. And as you can tell, you know, we're more than happy to do it. So I feel really good about that. And it's, you know, it's liberating, I guess you could say.
If I might help, I... It was a biggie to me, but I will say that, you know, hallelujah. And you have to understand that all the years I spent here, I just kept seeing PSBRS keeping us up like it's due a hundred thousand dollars every year. This will come to roost when we do our budget session in the next few weeks. So we'll see the... How do I say, the fruits of our labor at that point. So as a council, we should all pat ourselves on the back. I'm sorry.
No, that's...
I'm sorry, I couldn't help.
I'll... I saw somebody else pull the microphone in front of her. I don't know if she wanted to comment or not.
Okay.
Put that away.
So, okay.
Mel took up my time, so...
I'm not going to say anything.
I'm going to stay out of that one. Okay, so the second item that I have is more than financial news. The audit was completed. Did they get their copy check? Nope. Okay, you'll be getting a copy if you wish. Now, if you don't want, let us know that too.
I'd like one.
Because, you know, they're time consuming to put together. And/or you can always look at the one that's on file at City Hall if you choose not to get them personally, but we'll make one for you.
Yeah, I made one for me.
Make one for you, for sure. And just put in your order with Carrie.
Oh.
Okay. She already has yours now. No findings, okay? No findings, that's the best possible outcome. And I think, you know, and I'm going to pat the person who did most of the work, keeping track of our finances, Carrie, for this accomplishment, again. And in a world where Gatsby brings about ten or twelve new rules each and every year that make it more and more difficult and complicated for us to follow them, it's nothing short of major when you can come up with a clean audit like this. So this is financial information that not only we can rely on, that the community can rely on, and should we need to use it for any financial transactions that we may have moving forward, then anybody who would look at this or give us a rating of any kind, they can rely on it too. So it is a very important document, and here I just want to say thanks. Y'all did your own work on this one. So, and then the last thing I have tonight is just a reminder. Y'all know this already, but you can tell from the smoke and you can tell from the smog that fire season has arrived. I am, as always, I am extremely concerned about the canyon areas, Tombstones, Actonakis, et cetera, et cetera. Please, for those of you who may be watching tonight and those of you who live in Old Bisbee, particularly, but everywhere, you know, the big fire that we saw yesterday didn't happen on a mountain. It happened on flatlands. So these things can happen anywhere at any time at this point. And when I was looking at my weather data yesterday, I mean, we had the perfect storm. Everything for a fire was right there, and it only takes a spark. So please, please be vigilant, everybody be vigilant, because by this time last year, we had already had our first wildfire. And very shortly after that, we had number two and three, and they were on opposite sides of the same canyon, so...
And the fuel load.
Yeah.
Is really big this year. I mean, I love the greens.
Yeah, so, you know, please, please be vigilant. And if you, anybody who cites anything that they think might be the least bit suspicious, please call nine-one-one because we want to follow them up before the fire starts and not just when we have a suspicious character that might be standing on a mountain sign looking like he's going to light a cigarette. So with that, I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Don't see anything else, any announcements, so I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'm a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.